Andrea, okay. Well, welcome this evening to the Amory Board of Education. We'll reconvene now in open session. And the first thing we will do is our Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You were right there.
Right on top, yeah.
We'll start out with the consent agenda items, and I had those, so I will make the motion to accept those.
Second that?
Aaron's second, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have any community comments?
Nothing on the list.
Nope, okay, then we'll go to our administrative reports.
First of all, let me introduce, not a guest, but rather now a permanent fixture to our board meetings, our new Director of Finance, Chris, I suppose I should get on mic, Chris McNamara, a 1989 graduate from Amory, spent many years in finance and a little different walk of life, but now she is here as our Director of Finance. Here's the way I describe her, she is the person that was in all the classes that Dale was not in.
Wow.
I gotta think about that, I don't know if that's a good thing or not.
I'm kidding, Dale.
There was a little, yeah. We might've had some class together, I don't know, hard to say.
All right, welcome.
Thank you, I am glad to be here.
Okay, Josh, you're up.
Okay, the month of November and early December, we had our National Honor Society induction ceremony on November 28th. December 5th, we had our high school honors choir concert in St. Croix Falls. And December 12th, we had our high school choir and our jazz band concerts. We were able to get those in. Future events at the high school, on January 4th, we've got our world language students taking a trip to the Guthrie Theater as part of their world language certification process. January 9th, we have honors band, and just letting you guys know, we had two more teachers that have gained their credentials necessary to teach the dual academic courses at UW River Falls, so we will be able to move forward with calculus as a dual academic course at River Falls, and psychology. And this only happens if these teachers are willing to take the extra courses and certification on their own to be certified by them. This CAP program, it's huge, it's a real benefit to our kids. They can take these courses, get college credit. One thing that you will see declining as a result of this is the number of students that we have in AP, but we're basically replacing AP with these courses, so just want to make you aware of that. But the students no longer have to rely on taking one test in May, it's their entire body of work. I think it's a great program.
And a big price peg, price point difference as well, AP versus that, getting to pay for the AP tests.
Right, but you do have to pay for the dual academic credit as well, but it's still a great deal.
At the middle school, we just finished up our food drive last Friday, and Steve Wilhelm came back to school and picked up all the food and brought it down, so we're really pleased to have the kids participate in that activity. Our project-based learning Genius Hour program, this is another year that we're getting ready for that, and we'll be kicking that off in January with our students. In addition, when we get back in January, we'll be working on some mid-year goal-setting with kids, so students will be talking about the individual goals that they set, and different things that they can do to try to improve how they're doing in school in all areas. Prairie Fire Theater is going to be coming up, and I believe that's the second week we get back, January 9th, they're doing Jack and the Beanstalk, if you've never seen a Prairie Fire play. It's pretty amazing what those kids can do in one week, and they'll have performances then on Friday and Saturday. Anything else I want to add to that?
No, but if Jack and the Beanstalk...
What did I say?
No.
Oh, Jack and the Beanstalk. I stand corrected.
We had that about 15 minutes into the show.
Well, now you ruined the surprise. And I try out is Monday for kids, yeah, Monday the 9th. We have our winter concert rescheduled for tomorrow night for 6th grade choir, 7th and 8th grade choir, and then 6th grade band, and then the middle school jazz band. The 7th and 8th grade band performed already this fall, and then this winter now we'll have our Christmas concert, and that will be tomorrow night, so we're excited for that. Fast bridge testing will be kicking off here in January. Students will be taking another indicator to see how they're doing in reading, language arts, and math, and that's pretty much what I have on the agenda for the middle school.
Good evening. Drama Rama took place in November, and so the intermediate school had teams from each grade level, they competed in Asiola, and they walked away with many different awards and ribbons. It was a big day for us, it's a wonderful opportunity for all of our students to get involved in something besides per se athletic events. So I want to thank Mr. Benson, Mrs. Leslie Jacobson, and all the parent volunteers and coaches who spend a lot of time working with our students on coaching them for their different parts and plays that they do. Kay Erickson visited the intermediate school and kicked off our food drive for this year. So our students collected 844 items, which was actually 229 more items than last year. Our leadership students then packed up all of the food and donated items, and Mr. Mylan Arcek dropped it off last Monday to the food shelf. The Giving Tree, the Amory Intermediate School staff sponsored a family in need this year, so I want to thank them for being very generous with the family that we sponsored, and then I also want to thank the Salvation Army. I was fortunate enough this past weekend to work with a wonderful committee of volunteers who put in a lot of work supporting our families that have needs during this holiday season. Report cards, they went home this past Friday, should've gone home on Thursday, but they went home on Friday, and family folders. 3rd grade concert, our 3rd graders had a wonderful holiday concert last week, they performed for our entire school here that day, and then that evening on the 8th, they had their performance at the auditorium. So I want to thank Mrs. Moscow and Mrs. Sunderland for all their hard work and their creativity. I'm never, I'm always amazed, I guess, at all the different parts that they had, and just ways that they incorporate different instruments, or just different things to get kids excited about music. And finally, I want to highlight our news team, so we have a news team that records here every week, it's made up of 5th graders, any 5th grader can sign up, and they work hard all week long, Monday through Thursday, recording different segments. It really is a really neat production, they put a lot of time into it, there's a lot of technology, and then that news segment airs every Friday. With lunch, and events, and upcoming things, and just different celebrations, I even have a little piece, they're pretty creative on what my piece is going to be for the week, so I'm always waiting in anticipation. And so I want to thank Mr. Mylan Arcek and Mrs. Annie Brayton, they put a lot of work into that every morning, and the kids really look forward to it, and it's a great thing for us to watch on Friday. Our upcoming events, we have our sing-along on the 22nd, we have Christmas break coming up, as Mr. Benson shared, we have fast bridge benchmark screening, we are January 9th through 13th. We have an all-school warrior rally for our PBIS celebration, and then finally, on January 20th, we will have an in-service stay here.
So you guys watch this in school then on Fridays?
We do.
So Tracy, is there any way that you can, like, put that out on social media? Is it, I mean, it can't be very long, right?
It's usually four to five minutes long. We end with the bank start.
Can you put it out so other people can see it?
That's up to the news director's if they want it out there.
Okay.
It's come up, they've talked about, like, sharing it, and sometimes they're like, oh, I don't know that, so if they want us to, we will.
It's the capabilities that are available, though.
Yes.
Okay, what I can do is, I can go back, I'll talk to Mrs. Brayton and Mr. Mylan Arcek and see what their thoughts are. It really, it's fun to watch, as a parent of a 5th grader, it's, they put a lot of work into it, and I mean, there's the green screens, and they, you know, they have a table, and there's a coffee cup in front of them, so it's very professional, and I think they really enjoy it, but...
Do they drink coffee?
No, it's empty, Benson.
Did you really just ask, are they drinking coffee?
I don't know what happens at the pool, but it's empty here.
If so, we need to talk a little bit about that.
They have put it on YouTube in the past, that way that it's just a place, we're not necessarily going on social media, but it's there on YouTube, the news team piece to that, so, and maybe when they're ready for that, we'll do that, but that can happen.
I will ask, though, it really, it's an awesome thing to watch, they put a lot of work into it, it's really fun.
It'd be cool just to see what they've got cooking up.
It would, I'd love for you to see it.
Awesome, well, hello. Our activities at the elementary school were turkey bingo, it's a fun way to lead us into Thanksgiving break. The students and staff finished off the bingo activity, dancing the turkey dance, or the chicken dance, in the hallways, so the kids really enjoy that, so that's a lot of fun. Our students enjoyed our PBIS celebration of activities, their teachers prepared those for them, so those were things like creating crafts, or playing board games, Lego creations, they just all, per grade level, kind of made up their own different stations for the kids, so that was a lot of fun, we enjoyed that. The Kindless Club followed up this with the delivery of thankful bags out into the community, and then the Way or High Five opportunity this month was playing board games with me, so we've been doing that, that's been a lot of fun as well. Our students and families participated in Holiday Fun Night, consisting of cookie decorating, singing holiday songs, making crafts, taking pictures with Santa. It was a great night, spending time with all the families. We also had a lot of staff that volunteered, so that was great, so we appreciate all those staff volunteers to make that night a fun night. Our report cards have been finalized, printed, sent out to parents in their family folders. Our first trimester ended on November 30th. And then outreach to the community, we have been collecting non-perishable food items as well, under our Christmas tree in the lobby, and the Salvation Army red bucket has been out underneath the Christmas tree as well, so we've been collecting change. The kids are able to add a character to our winter ice skating scene on the big screen in the lobby, every time they collect $10, so they're up to nine new characters, so they're pretty excited to see that every day when we add new characters. And then, as always, our referendum continues, and it's moving forward, and it's fun, and it's getting to the exciting part, where we can kind of see what it's going to look like, and we're looking to start that work this next fall, so it's exciting. And then our upcoming events are the elementary holiday sing-along on the 22nd of December, then no school for our holiday break, our reading incentive kickoff, it starts on January 9th, and then our fast bridge winter benchmark assessments are the 16th through the 19th, in-service on the 20th, and then we have an upcoming CISA HMH training, January 24th, 26th, and 27th. Thank you.
All right, good evening, World of Special Education, later on in the agenda here, we'll be doing some state report cards and those sorts of reviews. There is a similar one for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, those are called LEA Federal Determinations. Their preliminary data was just released in the last couple weeks, and so this measures, I don't know, about 16 different areas in special education, whether it's compliance measures, or student achievement, testing participation rates, for examples, and then those are evaluated and set up against a group of standards and compliance result indicators, and then calculated to give us a score. So consider this, a sneak preview, I actually was ready to report on it, and then reread the letter and learned that this is not public data to be shared yet, so that's going to come out in the spring when those results are finalized. Other news, school-based mental health, to continue to just keep you updated on that, we're putting together, selecting some locations. Facilities has helped us upgrade the telephone communication systems in a couple of those locations, and we're really focused in on hopefully getting therapy up and running, you know, potentially this year yet. We'll just see how it goes in terms of getting our memorization of understanding, those have been vetted by a couple team members, and through legal, and we're going to continue to look at those. But just on a path, and as I've said before, if you want to go, if you want to go fast, go alone, if you want to go far, go together, and that's what we're intending to do with the school-based mental health. Pupil Services mini-grants, just thought it was a great thing that our new elementary and early childhood and speech-language therapist collaborated to apply for a mini-grant that involved alternative communication tools for students' communication needs. So augmentative and alternative communication is a term used to describe items to help a person communicate when their communication's not effective. There's a lot of new digital tools, things are coming out every day, so this is just a pretty neat, innovative proposal that they put together to really help kids communicate. And then finally, some collaboration, anybody who's spent any time with trying to coordinate, whether it's local, state, or federal agencies, to talk to each other and work together, can know that can be a challenging thing. We'd just like to report a real success in that the Department of Vocational Rehabilitation in the school district has recently agreed to share some transportation costs for a student to attend Northwoods Tech, and that's through the post-secondary transition plan that was developed, you know, both through DVR, the family, the parent, and the school. And so it's just a great example of really what they call berated funding, right, where a local school district and a state agency work together for the benefits of kids. So just want to thank DVR and everybody who's participated in that to make it happen.
That's all I have tonight, thanks. Cool. Anybody have questions? Okay, then we'll go on with the pupil nondiscrimination and educational equity report. Brad.
You're up.
Oh, yeah, okay, pupil nondiscrimination and educational equity report, this is just an annual report. We just had one registered complaint in the area of sexual harassment. That was resolved informally, which you can see there, no reports in the other categories listed.
So this was a pupil complaint, or not, did it say?
This was a pupil complaint, correct.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we'll go to our informational items, and Troy? I thought maybe Paula's phone was the music you were going to block up to.
At least I know my kid hated it when she was going, "Okay."
Looking over and just saying, you know, I think you owe Tom an apology for the disruptions. At least he was staying in the holiday, you know.
It was holiday, it was.
But yeah, next time we'll leave a sign on the door for your apology.
It always happens when it's zipped in your coatbox.
Well, I'm here to give an update on the projects, and here to speak on behalf of both myself and Gary. So Gary wanted to go home and do a few things tonight with his family, so I said, "Yep, you take off," and he said, "Good, because you never let me talk anyway," so.
He never talks anyway.
So yeah, but just giving you updates in terms of what's going on with regard to the projects. And the high school's out to bid currently, we added a little bit of scope to the project as an alternate, and that's to replace the flooring in the high school classrooms. And so we'll see where the pricing comes in and what happens there, but we did increase the scope to include that in the project. We had the walkthrough today, we had about 20 contractors there going through the building, and it was scheduled actually for last week, but was postponed due to snow, so they walked it today. Their final questions are due tomorrow, and right now, bids are due on the 22nd for the high school. So Kraus will then take a few days, probably a few weeks, with the holiday, and go through the bids, vet all the contractors, and make sure that they've included everything, and then you should start to hear from them in terms of who the low bidders were, and how that process is moving forward, probably in mid-January. We are wrapping up documents right now for the elementary school. We should be issuing documents to Kraus Anderson on the 23rd. They'll review them and then be issuing documents to bidders sometime right after the holidays. And so bids will be coming back sometime late January, early February, and then we'll go through the same process at that time. There is a third component to what we're doing, and that is the masonry restoration project. So every building, other than the elementary school, will have some sort of exterior restoration that's taking place, and those documents are being developed so that all of the masonry restoration work will go out at the same time, and that way we'll have one contractor responsible for all that work at all the buildings. Probably the one building that would surprise everybody is around one of the bus garages, there's concrete block that's deteriorating, it's been a problem for quite some time. Even that work is being included in this bid package to replace that masonry, even the metal doors in the bus garage, because they're all kind of corroded, it doesn't take much to pop them open, or, you know, I think with a little bit of effort, you could probably even crawl underneath, because some of the holes are getting so large in those doors, but we'll be replacing those as well. So lots going on in the projects, and lots getting done. Even today, Twyla, George, and Chris and I sat down and went through some of the project financing, and how some of that's going to work. I think that Chris has a lot to offer George. We're hopeful that you'll be able to spin them around and build a sign, so good luck with that.
We've been working on that for decades.
Yeah, but it was a good meeting, so we talked about what's going to happen as we move forward, how do you do the accounting for projects, how do you track it, why do we break the financing down into different codes, and how will that help as you move forward into audit seasons and things like that. So with that, we'll kind of jump into the elementary school and talk a little bit about that project. I shared probably the biggest thing with regard to the elementary school is we moved the addition from the north end to the south end, and that was done for a variety of reasons. First, just budget. When we started looking at cost increases due to inflation, some of the challenges that we have with regard to just delivery of some of the materials and systems, we came up with an option with Paula to move the addition to the south end of the building, and that actually creates a much smaller addition, which saves on maintenance and operational costs and everything else, but it really does focus on the 4K and K kits, and so we'll be talking a little bit about that. We're going to relocate the parking area and move the front entry of the building when it's perceived by folks who are coming for pickup and drop-off of students, as well as deliveries and things of that nature. And then, looking at the reshuffle inside the building besides the addition, is we've defined the alternate of moving the administration area from where it currently sits to the front door. As of right now, the estimates that were completed by Kraus Anderson, all of the alternates, which include the casework, some of the flooring, as well as the relocation of the office area, with all of that in, we were about $600 under budget. And that was wonderful, and that even included a contingency for $200,000, because we have yet to hear from the state on our petition to get rid of the three-hour wall by adding a fire suppression system to a portion of the building. So after rounds with three different individuals at the state with regard to how that code gets applied, how that alternative methodology of interpreting the code goes, after three individuals, I think we're close to finally buttoning it up and saying, "Okay, work done." And based on the comments and the budgeting coming back from Kraus, the effort for petitioning should save the district, if it's successful, over $250,000. So that's been a long thing that's been happening, I think it's, Sean, it's been taking us about a little over two months, we've been working on it since we started.
I think more, actually.
Yeah, so those things take time, and hopefully we're coming to the end of it. So with that, next slide. I was told that I need to do this if I'm going to walk around the podium. So if we're looking at the building, the biggest things to keep in mind as we're kind of moving forward is the fact that this is now going to be the early childhood center. And so the main entry is going to be coming into the front of the building here. At this point, there's secured doors that then allow a visitor to pass separately either into the early childhood center or into the elementary school property. Once inside this area, if this becomes the office for the elementary school, they will pass directly into the area, but the way it sits right now, they'll come in, access only this hallway, and enter the administrative area, and all of these doors are on hold open, so that if there is an event, or if there's a concern about safe and security, all those doors can be released, and the only area that a visitor could move through is just this hallway right here, going in and out each direction, and that locks down successfully each side of the building. When I talked about what else is being done, all the casework in all the classrooms, including plumbing, is being replaced, as well as we're providing hot water to each of the classrooms, which currently doesn't exist. And then another part of it is, when we start looking at it, how special ed, art, and music down here, and some of the shuffling of the different spaces will be complete, and then again, if the offices move over here, some of these functions move down into this particular area. This becomes the new 4KK wing, and it's locked down separately from the rest of the building. This large area in the middle becomes an academic commons, it basically provides space for pull-out, for art, and a variety of other activities that currently, it's hard to access when you have lots of little kids without sending them out and wandering the halls, and so this kind of keeps all of those functions and activities in this area of the building. Each one of the classrooms is basically as large as the biggest teaching space you currently have in this, in the district, as well as, as well as inside each of them, there is a separate toilet, so that the kids don't have to leave the classroom to go use the restrooms. So access to water and things like that are also included in the space. This all opens up to a wall at the end, and gets access to the playground, and again, just trying to keep all those kids together without them wandering the halls, that also puts them close to physical education, kitchen cafeteria, and all those amenities as well. That leaves first and second grade on this side, and it leaves open in the future with some of the classroom and classroom uses, for a space like this to be created for first and second grade, utilizing some of the rooms on this side. So as you kind of move forward, if you find that this is successful, and you think it would be beneficial for first and second grade, there is an opportunity there, the way we've laid the building out, for you to look at that in the future. Safe and secure, I talked a little bit about it. Red marks indicate the first line of lockdown. Blue then indicates the second tier, and again, 4K are on a separate, on a separate set of doors that provide lockdown all the time, and each of the doors then provide a different level of safe and secure lockdown based on hardware and how the technology is controlled. Big thing is how do we secure the perimeter, and then how do we control movement inside the building? Site improvements, this is the addition going down here, and in this location, we're going to be tearing out all of this stuff that's kind of hashed, and moving playground equipment, all of that should be starting as soon as the frost leaves the ground. Next slide. And then there's also red spots here where we're having major changes and upgrades to the mechanical and electrical systems. Inside the space is the new classrooms, we did some layouts in terms of how we would envision furniture to be added to the space. Currently, there's only about $150,000 in the furniture and fixtures budget, which is something that, hopefully if bids come in better, there will be more money available for FFNE. Right now, we figure we can probably afford about maybe half of what we have planned or what we have shown here, but it gives you a sense that after we sat down and went through everything with staff and Paula, this is kind of the configuration we came up with when we started identifying furniture needs. And this is kind of a graphic of what those rooms would look like finished. The other thing I should probably point out in those spaces is that the supply air is actually going to be coming in at the floor. There will be heating coils that are part of that, similar to radiant heat at the perimeter. It's a partial movement towards the low-temper air system that we use to try to improve indoor air quality in classrooms in all different types of settings. So if you think about fresh air coming in at the floor, sometimes it feels a little bit chillier, but hopefully with the heating coils there, we'll use that to provide more supplemental heat. But if you look at a system like this where the fresh air is up at the ceiling, when we all breathe, where does what we breathe go? It's the warmest air in the space, right? And the warmest air in the space does what?
Rises.
Rises. So if the fresh air is coming from the ceiling, how fresh is the air when it has to pass through the ballast air in the space to get to the breathable zone? And so by putting the fresh air in the ductwork in the floor, delivering it at that level, taking the bad air for the return air off the top, what should that do to indoor air quality?
Should improve it.
It should improve it. So, you know, I tell folks that two things that air purifiers do is they're really good about, they're really good at systems like this, continuing to spread germs and viruses around the room, because that air has to come from somewhere to get to you. So if you're breathing back air, and you have a cold, and the air purifier's up here, and the air purifier is drawing air from all over the room, where does the air... air expelled by somebody who's sick, where does that air go to get to the purifier?
Past all of us.
Past all of us. Right? And then the same thing with an air purifier in this system is if you have an air purifier with this system, and it's meant to capture foul air, well, if all the foul air is a pie, what we're doing is we're trying to draw the air that's contaminated from a pie down low. So that's a little bit about the mechanical system and what it tries to accomplish in each of the spaces, you know, in that new part of the building. And this is the learning commons, that space right here, between those new classrooms and what it looks like. You'll see again that lots of pullout space. So when you think about the kids that are coming in at this level, are all four-year-olds going to be at the same level when they enter this grade level at kindergarten? And the answer is no. They actually need a lot of support, a lot of help. And so all of those support teams are coming to the kids, and all of that is now happening out here instead at some remote room. And so hopefully, if those support team members, be it special ed, or just classroom aides, or whatever it is, when those folks are here helping, when they come here, just the fact that they're there helps everybody in the room. And it also helps break down the stigma early on of if I'm somebody who needs a lot of help, and everyone in the classroom knows that, hey, look at that, Troy's going down to see Mrs. Johnson in the corner room, a lot of that starts to go away. And that's really what we're after at this grade level is even at this age level, you start to develop a pecking order. And studies show that when you start doing these types of things where you're delivering the services here, instead of taking them somewhere else, you go a long ways in pushing that down the road. And hopefully, we do a much better job of getting all the kids up to the same level as they progress through the different grades. And this is what that space will look like when.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So I don't see lockers at all. I have lockers for that grade. Are they gone? Are they in the classrooms?
They are in the classrooms. So we elected to do that. And that's primarily because when you think about turning all these little kids out into the hallway to put their snow pants and boots and everything else on, and then some kids are faster than others, so they're walking all over each other, kicking boots down the hallways, you pretty much eliminate all of that.
It's almost like you bet at a school.
Exactly. But you really start to just take that down to a level where it's managed in the classroom. Nobody goes anywhere other than staying in the classroom. And so that's why we like to put them in the classroom if at all possible. And then bathroom upgrades, what those look like. All of them are accessible, focusing on ADA, accessibility, cleanliness, and hygiene, and then also making sure that we provide the right amount of storage in and around those amenities and facilities. Looking at some of the other spaces, adding casework and whatnot look like. Having a bathroom here, so we do have some trenching that needs to be done for plumbing. And then office space down here, close to the main entry, so that provides secondary observation for who's coming in and going. Few more classrooms, just showing what's being done with cabinetry and things like that. And then this is the office space. The office space typically, if everything's being done correctly at the perimeter of the building, and everybody's doing a good job making sure the perimeter doors are secured, the only way in and out of the building is through this new main entry that comes in. And once you're in this vestibule, the only way you can go is into the office here, and there's no way out. So the idea is if you come to the office, and if you think back to my first presentations, you know, 95% plus of violence that happens in elementary schools walks through either the perimeter door or the front door. So we want to control that activity. And so when they come in, we have an opportunity for the window here to provide passive observation. They come in the door, this door's locked. The one door that always ends up being a big issue in the office space is the nurse. Oftentimes, folks will put doors on the corridor side. And what happens is if an intruder comes in to do harm, they only need to go through the nurse's office to gain access to the hallway. So even though it seems like it's, oh my gosh, this is a big issue, I've got little kids coming in and out that have to be buzzed in and out and things like that, it's being done to secure the perimeter of the administration space. Once that's done, we could see on the other plan that as you move out into the hallways, we really try to control movement. So again, back here at the office, we've got locked doors, and those doors are controlled by basically fobs. So when teachers come to visit the office to get their mail or anything else, what do they need to have with them?
Their fob.
Their fob. What do they need to have in order to get out of the office?
Their fob.
Their fob. So people say, why do I need my key to get out? It's because you never know when somebody who's there to do harm is going to enter. And so you don't want them to escape, or get out, or move into the rest of the building unless they're keyed to do so. So that's just a little bit about what we do and why we do it in the administrative suite. And then this is a graphic of what that would look like. And again, all the alternates currently fit within the budget, and all total were about $600 under budget. And that includes a $200,000 contingency right now, until we know exactly what the final resolve or ruling is from the state on our petition for code. Interior finishes, lots of them, from paint to flooring to fabrics and things like that. And one thing I should say too is when you look at the fabrics and stuff, people say, why do you have all that fabric? Part of the reason is because we really work hard to improve acoustics. George and his team, what do they like? Hard and durable, right? How fast can I clean it? And how many people do I need to do to clean it? And what does all that hard surface do? It ruins the acoustics, right? And our kids don't have fully developed hearing until seventh or eighth grade. So when you're yelling at your kids at home, it's true that they oftentimes don't understand, right? So we just need to keep that in mind. So what we do is we try to control the acoustics.
And male adult. Yeah, yeah. And male adult, exactly, right.
So what we're trying to do is control the acoustics. So when we did the renovations at the elementary school years ago, we put all those acoustic panels above the lockers. Why did we do that? To try to cut down the noise levels in the hallways because every surface was harder. So those are some of the things that we're trying to do at the elementary school, especially in that learning commons, because it is so important that we try to really manage the acoustics. And there's always going to be issues and trouble, you know, with regard to that. It's just the way surfaces are designed for schools, for durability and for cleanability. But we try hard to make sure that we have money in the budget to take care of those items. Next slide. On the exterior, we're doing lots of things on the inside. The things that we're doing on the outside all pertain to budget, 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 schedule, schedule, schedule. And so currently on the outside of the building, you see lots of brick, you see lots of stone. On the new building, you're going to see lots of precast. It's fast, it's inexpensive, and it allows us to do lots of other things that are needed all across the district that get our needing to be assigned. So this is what it looks like. This, believe it or not, is the end of the existing building right here. This is the receiving area, if you're familiar with the side of the building. And then this is the addition that faces the new pickup drop off loop, and this is the receiving lane here coming up. The thing that I will tell you about this right here, that gentleman, he looks really good right now. He is standing where the dumpsters will be going. So just to kind of give you some perspective, we do have to have a place for that. And so when you look at the site, there's this little loop that comes through. The reason is is to access the dumpsters straight on so they take up as little space as possible. Next slide. This is the other side facing what is now the front of the building, or the west side. And then this being the south side, what we've done is we've put more of our money into things like the sidewalk, making sure that it's 10 or 12 feet wide. The reason is because if you think about how do you clear snow on this concrete surface where kids are playing with their trikes and everything else, they like to have a lot of spaces like that. There's a gate on each side that you can open up and literally run a truck through with a blade on the front and push the snow all the way through to keep that clean. Even the sidewalks that go around the perimeter, we're trying to widen the walks to make sure that they can run a truck across them and plow them that way, rather than using some of the other methods that they've been using. And we're even going as far as to set the fence posts in concrete on the edge of the sidewalk, so that we don't have all the stuff growing up in the fence and it becomes easier to maintain. It's going to say, maybe Becky, that was your idea of what good focus was all about. So this is the 4KK area of the building. I have to talk to the team back at the office. I'm getting dizzy just running back and forth And things that I really enjoy doing is views and daylighting is important, I think, to all kinds of spaces. So even in this space, the end of the learning commons is all one inch of wall. So you get lots of natural light at the end. It kind of gives you some connection to the outside, even though it's an interior space. And try to do that in each of the different areas that we're working on across the districts. If you can't see outside, you better have something really, really exciting to look at. So if Gary were here, he would tell you that his priorities are making sure that when they start construction, everything needed to really move the project forward is already on site. Too many of the projects that they're working on, and even we're working on with them and with others, end up at a point where you start the project and you lose momentum because all of a sudden the steel can't get here because we can't get all the parts and pieces we need. And so even when we had the conversation at the high school today, one of the conversations was, do we do bar joists or do we do steel beams? Bar joists seem simple, right? Another long lead item. And the other thing we were talking about is even though the steel seems cheap right now, the cost of shipping it is huge. So we could get all the steel we need for the hallways and all of the adaptations that we need to do around the gym for snowboard, we can get all of that steel on two trucks. If we do it with bar joists, we need about 10 trucks. And so if you think about just the transportation cost of all that steel coming from somewhere about 500 miles, that's a lot of transportation costs, a lot of trucking costs, a lot of the norms right now still with regard to that type of transportation. So we are going to that level of conversation and discussion, trying to find ways to make sure that we start them as early as we can. We have the stuff here that we need to. We're working collaboratively with contractors to make sure that what we hear is what they hear on their side for purchasing. And so hopefully, it'll come together in the end. And right now, Kraus is looking at a completion date for both buildings and all the work in the district, all of '24.
I've noticed wood beams in these classrooms. What's the purpose of those? And what are they, are they for light fixtures? What is going on there?
The beams are actually blue lamps. So the existing building is constructed out of blue lamp and what's called heavy timber construction, which blue lamp beams are. The building code, because this is a non-sprinkled building, has to maintain the same construction type as the existing structure.
Okay.
So even though we would have liked to maybe use other types of construction material, we were left with using heavy timber because that's what the existing building is constructed of, and the entire building's non-sprinkled. So lastly, given that books like this, if it's for your use, share with your friends, neighbors, anyone else who'd like to, to say this is what you're buying, and this is what you've got. You have one for the high school, now one for the elementary. What we encourage you to do is if you're done with it, and you think, man, what else am I going to do with it? Don't throw it away. Take it to the bank, leave it at the counter for people to look at when they're filling out their deposit slips. Take it to the grocery store, you know, leave it at the counter there. You know, just get them out into the community and let people know that, you know, this is what's happening with the tax dollars that we're, you know, they're sending your way to spend on including facilities. So just encourage you to do that. And I think it does, there's a lot of goodwill out there.
Give some for the other two buildings as well?
Yeah, yeah, there's some more back in the box. I can use some of those.
I've got an extra one too, Tom.
Okay. Thank you.
A lot of thought has went into this and a lot of work. And it looks probably better than I could have ever imagined it to look when we started talking about this. And I just want to thank you too for the work of the petitioning for the fire system for saving the district a couple hundred thousand dollars that we can use elsewhere to do similar good things with. So your work has been impeccable, amazing.
George roped us into an iron flat contract, but the one thing we had left to negotiate with Sean is, you know, some of the costs of going through the process of petitioning. It is laborious, long. And so contractually, we do have that out there to talk to you about and try to resolve at the end. But whatever our fee is, is far less than the $250,000 you'll save. And not to mention the schedule, you know, it would have had about a three-month impact on schedule to build that. And there's not a lot of time for you to do that without shutting parts of the building down. So which Paula couldn't tolerate.
Thank you, Trey.
Thank you.
Nice comeback by your team, by the way, there today. Quite a talking point. I thought you were going to come here to gloat tonight. I thought you were.
Well, you know, I was waiting for Tom to say something.
Oh. Tom's usually pretty shy.
Good teams don't get in that situation, that's all.
Oh.
The fraud alert does keep going off. But no, just kidding.
Maybe our quarterback looks better than theirs though, doesn't it? He's quiet.
He's a golfer fan. He's not even a Mikey fan.
I just tried to imagine what it was like at Tom's house. The comeback is happening, you know, is he like standing on the couch, jumping up and down?
I don't know. It's like four Super Bowls and five NFC championships I've suffered through, so I'm not going to say anything.
Drive safe. Thanks, Trey.
Thank you.
Happy holidays and have a wonderful week.
You as well.
Thank you again. With that, we'll go on to our district and school report cards.
Okay. I'll bat leadoff on this, and then I'll pass the baton to Josh, and then it'll go down the line there, because it is structured by building. And the first of, the first bit of information's district-wide. So this is a conversation presentation about school and district report card. This is a state mandate from the Department of Public Instruction. There are four areas that you're going to consistently see throughout this. Student achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on-track and post-secondary readiness. That third item there, target group, that's an established group of a certain segment of your population. That's what target group means. A word of caution for the Department of Public Construction, that word of caution is COVID certainly did have an impact on test scores and thereby on school report cards. We lost here in this district, March, April, May, and then a large portion of the tail end of the calendar year 2021 with, or 2020, with November and December. So scores did fall, not just statewide, but nationwide. So take that with a grain of salt. And then lastly, remember that we here in the school district of AMB pride ourselves on testing every kid. We tested 99% of our kids. We always do. But statewide participation was far less than that. So that does impact the scores. The scorecard you see here for the present year is very similar to what you saw in years past. It's 72.1. On the next slide, you'll see the scorecards over time. There have been eight different There have been eight different years where a scorecard has been issued to all Wisconsin public schools, three years where it simply hasn't been issued for anybody, including the COVID year of 1920. And you'll see our scores have largely been in the low to mid 70s with the exception of that 15, 16 was pretty high. So we're very similar to years past. The first area where you actually see statistics, the first chart, the priority area of achievement, our line is the blue line, the gray line is the state line. So to help you understand this, you read from top down, but the scores go left, right. So our proficiency in the area of achievement for English language arts, arts as a district was 69.8% as opposed to the state average of 61.4. And you'll see the same for the school year 21, 22, and then you'll see the same two items for math. The present year in math was 68 versus 57. So we are 11 points ahead of the state average in math as a district in this last year and 10 points ahead of the state in the area of English language arts on this particular criteria. In the area of growth, growth means just that, growth of kids academically from point A to point B, as in they improve in their learning. You'll see again the very same two priority areas, English language arts and math, and you'll see again, we are ahead of the state in the area of growth, 3.8% in the area of ELA, and we are at the state average in the area of math as a district. The last chart that I have, actually a second to last, I think I missed one. Yes, I did. The next slide is a priority area of on-track to graduate. We are the blue, the state is the gray. So you move from left to right, you see eighth grade math, state math, ELA at the intermediate school, then you see a graduation rate from the high school, and then absenteeism, which means just that we have 90% of our kids here, whereas 85% at the state absenteeism mean kids gone from school. And you'll see in every single one of those markers, we are ahead of the state average, blue ahead of gray. Almost finished, I think this is, and this is the last one. Priority area, target group outcomes for the last two years. So we are comparing two years ago to last year, our own scores, this is no state comparison, so you see graduation, chronic absenteeism. You have to reach a certain criteria to be chronically absent, it isn't just sheer attendance, you have to be gone X times over X time period. And then the area of growth and then the area of achievement. Our scores are up and down depending on the year, again, this is a comparison to ourselves, but we have been strong in the area of graduation, we have strong attendance, we have had strong growth in this district, and our achievement has been, I'll let Tom talk about this when he gets to the middle school score specifically, it isn't 25% of our kids proficient, it looks much different than that, and I'll let him explain that when he gets to the middle school score. The high school is the next section, so I'm gonna turn that over to Josh.
Okay, we're at the 54.3. We did actually go up from last year, if you remember, we really hit a low spot a couple years ago, and I have to remind you all that the scoring on this is a three-year average. So we have students that graduated two years ago that are still counting against us and it's, it's a cycle, so once you dig a hole, it takes a while to get out of there. I'm also going to point out that this is only focusing on English and math, it's not focusing on all the other 80% of the things we have going on at the high school, so I think that's really important to notice. You will see in terms of priority area of achievements, in both English language arts and math, we were ahead of the state average. Where we are struggling is with our bottom 25%. Overall, in the CISA, we ranked 13th out of 39 in overall achievement, but our bottom, our target group, our bottom 25%, we're near the bottom, second to last. You'll see some other data here that shows we have some great things going on with our top kids, we have some work to do with our bottom. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. All right, you'll see that math, I'm sorry, we'll start with the English language arts, had some growth there, 35.6 to 43.2. Math took a dip. I'll remind you that we've gone through, we have six different math teachers for two different positions over the last three years, so there's been a lot of change and turnover in our math department, so we're still working through that. Contract to graduation, these are some of the things we've worked really hard with. I attribute our alt ed program as being a very big help for us and working on some of these at-risk kids to get them to graduation. We're working very hard on the absenteeism rate, our score going up there, lots of work, lots of phone calls to parents, lots of work and effort. It will not surprise you that our biggest issues with absenteeism are our target group kids, our bottom 25% is by far the area where we have the largest, to get them to school, you know, we're making phone calls to police for wellness checks, it's, it's challenging, very challenging there. The priority area outcomes, we've already talked about this a little bit, graduation rate we've really improved on, the absenteeism is there, growth has been pretty similar, and the achievement is not where we wanted to. Now, this is the target group, the bottom 25%. You'll notice some good trends here, this is our English language arts. If you look at the yellow at the top, that's the highest advanced category, 9.1% of our kids hit that threshold. Go back to 2017, 18, we hadn't had a score that high, so while we're doing a great job with those top-end kids, the number of kids that are in that middle group, that middle tier, we need to keep people out of the blue is what we really need to focus on. So that's English language arts, if you'd go to math, please. Math, once again, you'll notice, you know, scoring 10% there in that advanced category, that is really an impressive score, going back to 2017, 18, since we've had numbers that high. But you'll notice our target group kids down at the bottom in math, struggling, that's where we need to focus our attention right now. Graduation rates, mentioned multiple times now, well above the state average, and really think the work that Mr. Jesse Rose is doing in our alt ed program is really, we're really reaping the benefits from that program. Plenty of things here, I don't need to go through all this list, sometimes you try to solve a problem by having too many things, so we're gonna have to narrow down this list a little bit, prioritize some things to fix things, but lots of hands on decks. My staff is all in on trying to work not just with our target group kids, but keeping things going for our top kids as well.
Okay, at the middle school, we had a score of 88.4, which put us at significantly exceeding expectations. The next slide will show, these are the actual test scores, these are state percentages. To clarify a couple of things, some of the numbers that you're seeing are not percentages, they're points, and I'll explain how, if you have questions on how that works, but these are percentages basically showing the kids that performed at proficient or advanced versus the state. The blue line is the difference between how our kids scored versus the state in English language arts and math. The next one is our report card score for achievement. So basically for achievement, they give you a point for every student that's proficient, they give you 1.5 points for every student that is advanced, and half a point for someone that's basic. Put them together, how many points do you get out of the 12 points possible for your school? And so that's a little bit different than the percentage, so people sometimes get confused if you're looking at that number. But so basically, this is the score for ELA from Amory versus the state in 2021, and then in 2021, 22, and then in math as well. We are happy that, you know, our achievement pretty much held steady at our school. Our kids scored very similar from last year to this year, but the statewide scores in achievement fell slightly. But we were happy to see that our achievement scores were higher than, than, than the state. The score that's probably our benefit is the growth score, and that's the next slide. And so the growth there, that just basically shows how much our students grew, and I'm gonna kind of put a comparison to that number in a minute. But that shows that our students grew significantly above the state average, so basically, kids in sixth through eighth grade, when they came to us each year, when they, compares their score from the year before, and it says, how much should that student have grown? And if you grow beyond that, then you add, you have basically what they say, value added. And so our students grew academically at a much higher rate than the state did in the middle school. The next slide is the priority area on-track to graduation. And so basically, it looks at our attendance rate. How well did our students attend school? And basically, you can see that we had about 96% attendance. The chronic absentee rate is a different number, and that means what percentage of your students missed less than 10%, or made 90% of the days? So if you have someone that misses 10% of the days. So basically what they're saying is that, yeah, you may have 97% of your kids coming to school, but if that, you know, if that 3% or 4% are never coming at all, then you're gonna get really nailed on the chronic absenteeism. So that's why they have those, they have two scores there, overall absentee rate and chronic absentee rate. And again, our attendance was above the state average for, in chronic absenteeism, about 9.4% above the state average, so that was good. The target group now, so basically what you've seen is you have achievement scores, how well your kids performed academically on the achievement, then how much they grow from the year before, and then their attendance. And then for middle school, they say math is the indicator. So what I want to say is, for, if you go back one slide, I'm sorry, if you go back one slide, they'll say, graduation rate, if students do not come to school, they are much more likely not to graduate, obviously. And then at the middle school, they say, if they are not doing math at grade level by the end of eighth grade, then they have a harder time graduating. At the elementary school, it's an intermediate, it will be reading when you see this number. So you get a score for how much you achieved, how much you grew, and then your attendance, and then for us, math at eighth grade. Then the final score, which is the four parts, 25% of the report card, says, how did your bottom 25% of your students do in each of those areas? So you might be doing really well, but then if your bottom 25% aren't, they're going to also score you on that. So basically, you get the scores for those three areas, and then the fourth score is the same things for the bottom 25%, who are also included the first time, so they count for you twice. So the bottom 25% in achievement might be different than the bottom 25% in growth, might be different than the bottom 25% in attendance. So you have three, you have three target groups that you work with. And they tell us exactly who those kids are when we get it, so that next year, they'll say, we're looking at how well these kids do for you the following year. And there, you know, we were pleased, you may, you look down like at that right side where it shows our score at 30.1, again, that's not 30% of the kids made proficiency, it's 30.1 points for the, and again, you're only talking about a few kids, so you can't get a lot of points because it's a small number. But overall, how well our kids did, this is one of the highest target group scores in the state, I think in probably top 10, the middle school was. Overall academic achievement, this is again, those test scores, and now these are percentages, and obviously you want to have less kids in the blue, and you want to have more in the gray and much more in the yellow. We were pleased with our, that our students proficient went up from last year about 2.5%, but they are down from pre-pandemic levels, from 1818 about 1.5%. Statewide, they were, just to give you an idea, they statewide scores fell about 12 to, 8 to 12 points from the pandemic, we did not, but we're still down about 1.5 from where we wanted to be from two years ago, or the, three years ago, because we didn't have a test that year. And in math, in math, middle school scores were affected more by direct instruction, and math was much more affected by the pandemic in our building, where at the elementary, it was reading. And that was really interesting, because they're learning to read, and by the time we get them, they know how to read, now they're reading to learn, but math was really more affected. And so we were pleased that our scores grew 8% from the year before, but we're still down about three percentage points from the pre-pandemic level, so we still have work to do. My big goal off of this is to increase the kids in yellow, the advanced kids. We want to see those numbers grow, and that's a big concern for us, and that's one of our goals. So overall highlights, we were pleased to have a school, a score of significantly exceeds expectations. We scored exceed expectations are significantly, every year there's been a report card. To put it in perspective, that score of 88.4 that you saw at the beginning is the 13th highest score in, in the state of Wisconsin for middle schools out of 384 schools. So that puts us in the top 3.4% of schools, of middle schools in the state. And we were the highest middle school score in our CISA, that's 40 schools, from Eau Claire to River Falls to Hudson, and the highest middle school score, obviously in the Middle Border Conference. Another highlight, the overall achievement score, you can see, what here is that you want to be as far right as you can. Far right means that you had a high, you were in the high scores, far left is in the low scores. So our achievement was good, it was in the upper end, but I've channeled my PJ Fleck golfer, it wasn't elite, but it was good. That, that score was the 60th highest out of 384, so put us about the top 15%, but we certainly have room to grow. But again, this growth score, which is the next one, that score was the sixth highest growth score in the state, so basically put us in about one percentile, top 1%. So when people talk to me and say, the biggest part I have is that when kids come to us, what are we doing with them? And there were only five middle schools in the entire state that had kids grow faster than we did. And put in perspective, last year, our ELA, ELA score was the highest growth score in the state. So hats off to all the teachers that are working really hard there. Our action plan, again, is to kind of continue ways to improve scores and to move more students to the advanced level, and a lot of that will be tied down into our PLC teams. And yeah, we want to do reteaches for kids that are struggling, but we want to do additional enrichment things for kids that are already showing they've learned it. So when we give an assessment and we say, okay, these kids need to get extra additional help because they're struggling, but if we have kids that are really doing well, what kind of an enrichment things can we do with them? And so basically to improve that differentiation as much as we can.
Do you know who actually scored in the 90 to 100 on this, on the list, the highlights?
Which ones?
Yeah, do you know what school districts did?
The, in, on the growth or in the?
I, I think what he's asking is who ranked ahead of us in both of those categories, growth and achievement, you have that list.
Oh yeah, I have it, I don't have it on me, but I know, I can, I can name, I can show you where to find it, but I can also tell you exactly who they were.
Okay.
Yeah, ship that to me and I'll ship that to the board, because we talked about that on Tuesday of last week, you had, you literally put it up on the screen.
Yeah, actually, I can share it with you before you leave if you want it. I have a database that shows all of that broken down.
Because I think you've already received inquiries from some of our neighbors, I know we did when we had a real strong ACT score years ago, that might be what you're inferring? We could find out what the others are doing, maybe?
Well, we've had a couple of schools that contact us about what we're doing with growth and how we got there and what, he wanted to know like, how, how did you structure your, your testing sessions? And I said, well, it's more of how you're structuring your day and what you're doing with kids. But yeah, if you go into the report card, there's a site that you can go to and you can click on, and you can look up any school. But then the way down at the bottom, there's a database that you can break into, and the database is confusing, but.
On DPI?
Yeah, it's on the DPI website. But I could, I pulled all the data out, I can share that with you, and then you can look at it, and then you can go back and kind of see where we found it.
If I'm you, Joe, I'm voting for Tom sending it because it is pretty incredible. See, it's, it's a maze. Tom's already got it.
I would appreciate that, I was on DPI for just over an hour today trying to look at everything that's put into grading and, which is a lot.
Yeah, so, and, yeah, and so like, to give you an example, even when you see the overall score, based on your free and reduced population, they're gonna, they're gonna weight achievement or growth higher or lower depending on that, there's all kinds of weird things that fit in. Trying to come up with a score, I actually did it once, took me about two days, and I actually got the score exactly how they got it, and then my mind was like melted. So, but, but I, I can share you the data of, of where everything is, and, and there's a database that you could get into too and look, but it's really extensive, I mean, it's thousands of pages long.
It is.
I was actually listening to a TV show today, and there was an expert on, and it was, they were talking about the effects that the pandemic has had on school, public school in particular, across the state and the closing of the school. And of course, he actually said the exact same thing that you did, that we look at the third graders, we see that learning loss, and because we do, all of our efforts are to teach kids how to read up until grade three, and then all of their education after grade three is, they, they're expected to know how to read, so then all education is done by reading. So that's why the, the marker is there for graduation prediction. I heard today that closing schools during the pandemic actually costs this country $2 trillion loss in lifetime earnings for these kids, and it will take 5.53 million years off of the life expectancy in general because of that loss unless we don't do something about it now. We can turn those numbers around and do something about it now, and these are good indicators that we, we're seeing that learning loss, so.
Right, so and like I was, like math scores were. Right, so and like, I was, like, math scores were, been a lot of big, it's always been a middle school pride, because there was, I think there were sixteen years in a row that we had the highest score, Middle Border Conference math scores. And so to see those dip was like, oh, but, because, and it hit middle school way more than the others, but then reading there. But the big thing that we didn't see was behaviors. And kids coming in, learning how to sit still, follow directions, and be regulated. Especially at the lower level, they're seeing some significant kids with being, you know, dysregulated and having a really hard time. And those, there's, you know, that, that's one area that I didn't quite see coming, but it certainly has affected us.
I, I found the data file that.
If you ship it to me, I can get it to him unless you find it before Jessica's.
We'll keep hunting.
Finish.
Sure you're not just watching the Packer game over there? Because if you are, you could just tell me.
Show them the report. No, no spoiler alerts, I got it recording.
Jessica, you're up.
All right, the Amory Intermediate School, so overall accountability score and rating for twenty-one, twenty-two is a seventy-five point two, which exceeds expectations. The next slide, as Tom had talked about, is percentile. So we are averaging ten point five percent higher in ELA than the state. And in math, we are averaging ten point one percent higher than the state average as well. So as Tom had shared, we are weighted in four different areas. So one of our areas that we are weighted in for this report card is achievement. And so again, in ELA and in math, we are about ten points above the state in achievement in both areas from twenty-one, twenty-two in ELA and math. We held pretty close to our twenty-twenty-one score. Just reflecting on our ELA adoption, this is kind of one of the driving forces that was behind it, is really wanting to focus on, on our ELA. We have strong math scores, knowing that we had an older resource, and just we had some, some new things we had to implement, some tiered interventions. It's become a big focus for us. The next slide is our growth score, so as both Josh and Tom have talked about, this is, actually is, is more than one quarter of our, of our composite score. So growth here, based on our demographics, our growth score actually accounts for twenty-nine point three percent. It's weighted more heavily than any other area of our report card. So we are meeting the state score in ELA, averaging sixty-six point zero. And then in math, we are actually nine point five points above the state average. So again, this is a focus area for us, just focusing on fidelity of a new ELA curriculum. We are putting a large amount of efforts into staff professional development, and then using tiered interventions for our students. As we just talked about, the most critical time that our learners had taken away from us, from them, and from staff, was when they were at the elementary during COVID. Reading skills are established in kindergarten and first grade, and there's a large amount of research out there that states that if you miss those critical times, it is essentially, you are trying to get those back and backfill those foundational skills. And that's a lot of, a lot of what we're doing, we see that with our third graders especially. There are huge deficits in foundational skills. So these students would have been in first and second grade, as I'm looking at the ELA scores when COVID had hit. The next is the other priority areas are on track to graduation, so just really, I'm going to echo Josh's thoughts in that we work really hard with families that are affected by attendance. Oftentimes, these are at-risk students, at-risk families, and so we really try to foster relationships, be very proactive with students. When we look at the attendance, we're actually opposite colors than Tom, so focusing on the blue. We have a ninety-three percent attendance rate. Our chronic absenteeism rate has gone up to approximately ninety-six percent. And then our ELA score is, is about where we were last year. Again, our target group outcomes will become one of our strongest focus areas. It is our bottom twenty-five percent of our population, oftentimes, it's our students that are at risk. So really focusing on the lighter, on the lighter color, the lighter brown, is to increase that growth in the achievement scores, as our growth score is, is the heaviest weighted in our report card. Academic performance over time, I always feel like this is backwards, so you're below basic, you're at the bottom in blue, and then as we moved up, are advanced. So some wins for us is that when we look at the twenty-twenty-one to the twenty-one, twenty-two, our below basic actually population got smaller, and our basic population got larger. And that's our goal, is to really focus on those below basic students that are lacking just those foundational skills in ELA and in math, and to move them up. We also would like to focus on our high-level learners, which is our seven point eight. And then in math, our twelve point five is really getting our high-level learners to grow as well. Our teachers do an excellent job of differentiating curriculum, so that every student has the opportunity to grow, regardless of, of what their incoming level is. Some highlights, so the twenty-one, twenty-two report card had a, had a rating of exceeds expectations. Our achievement score, we exceeded the state in ELA by ten point five percent, and ten point five points, and then in math by eleven points. And then another celebration is AIS met the state score in ELA and exceeded the state in math as well, in growth. Continuing highlights, our greatest populations of growth in ELA, so there's a projected growth rate of three point zero, and that takes into consideration all the different components of a score that a state would project a student's growth at. So our students that, within our, within our building, that made the most amount of growth are economically disadvantaged. They actually grew point one more than projected growth for that individual population. And then students not proficient, same, actually grew at a rate of point one more in ELA. Greatest populations of growth in math, so all of our students exceeded the growth in math. So again, the projected growth was three point zero, our students grew at a rate of three point five. And then students economically disadvantaged grew at a rate of three point three. And then students that were not proficient in math last year also grew at a rate of three point three. So our action plan is to continue to focus on our district's three big initiatives. So the first one is professional learning communities, we refer to them as PLCs. So we're going to continue to focus on PLCs as a building, we have weekly meetings during those PLCs. Teachers evaluate data, talk about grade levels, but also talk about different tiered interventions, are they working? If not, we really use that time to collaborate on different ideas to assess our students and supplement any sort of instruction that they might need. We are continuing our work on building grade level common formative assessments in both math and reading. We're further along on that in math than we are in reading, with a new reading curriculum. We are building those, along with Teresa Stanley, our reading consultant through professional development. We will continue to use our response to intervention model, so that's tier one, tier two, tier three. So tier one is our universal instruction, tier two are title supports, and then tier three are even more significant supports that are put in place for students. For ELA, we're going to evaluate the new curriculum, focus on the alignment of that curriculum with our essential standards. We want to really focus on improving our growth score in ELA, that's the one that's weighted the heaviest for us again, and it is our lowest score. So we're going to continue to focus on that. We're taking a page out of Tom's book, we're going to utilize some goal setting on the forward exam. And then in math, we're going to begin reviewing the new Wisconsin math standards for twenty-twenty-four implementation. So myself and a team of educators across all four buildings are attending professional development through CISA, getting ready for this rollout, getting ahead of, ahead of the rollout to get some things in place for the new math standards that will come out. We're going to focus on mathematical practices in the use of math talks in each classroom, and then again, utilizing goal setting on the forward exam. The other two components of our action plan is positive behavior, intervention, and supports. So we're going to continue the implementation of the PBIS tiered framework to support students, behavior, academic, social, emotional needs. We're going to evaluate data and implement practices and systems with fidelity, and then use of tier two and tier three supports. And then finally, as a universal curriculum, use second step to provide instruction for students. And the last component is, of our district initiatives, is TSS, so trauma-sensitive schools. So we're going to train additional staff on trauma-informed practices through CISA professional development. And then finally, again, continue to use the second step curriculum to foster an environment in which all students feel safe, valued, and confident.
Do you want me to handle this, or you want to? Because there's really not a lot of fun to be had.
I don't have as much fun.
On the state report card for the elementary. Lean elementary doesn't have a scorecard, there's no mandated standardized tests that take place at the elementary. For the purposes of talking about the elementary, when you refer to the intermediate, you're referring to both. That's for all elementaries that have just a K-two setting like we do here in Amory. So that's why they get an AR, which sort of doesn't mean much to anybody, just they don't get a score.
I should also highlight that when you look at the Amory Intermediate School report card, there are the Montessori third graders that are a component of that report card as well. So when I report on that, their scores are rolled into the AIS report card.
Yeah, there is, yeah, just that handful of Montessori kids that are, are included in that. But outside of that, we really just use our district-wide assessments to use those foundational reading and math skills to just move forward and, and help build those for the next report card at the intermediate school.
Joe, we were able to filter this, get those six schools in the middle school growth.
Do you need to get on the screen, or you're just going to read them off?
I'll just read them off, and you won't be surprised by any.
I will not, probably.
Winnicottani, Whitefish Bay, Sturgeon Bay, Holy Hill area, I don't know where that is. Little Shute, Sebastopol, and Cedarburg, kind of that southeast quadrant that historically is.
So in this, in this database, Tom, you know, we, we're testing ninety-nine percent. Is that on that database as those schools, what percentage?
You can go into the report card and see that, but it doesn't show that on the database.
But you can go look at each one.
So then, when they don't, let's say they do eighty-five percent, are they, do they give them a score on the fifty percent that didn't?
They'll get a, well, they'll get a, no, they'll get a score on how well their kids perform. But whether they're going to get, where they'll have an issue is under federal IDA, under testing, you know, ninety-five percent of your kids, they'll get a flag on it, it's a different report card.
I could be wrong, but my estimation is those schools also tested ninety-nine percent, but those, the portfolio of most of those schools looks nothing like ours, if you know those areas.
I'm just talking about all the schools.
Right, well, I know, and I don't have the numbers exactly on my head, but I know that, like, two years ago, when we, you know, we tested ninety-nine, and some were testing eighty-five, eighty-six percent, this couple of years ago. But our, we still outperformed them, which is nice, but, you know, and we don't know which kids weren't testing or not, but I can take a guess which ones weren't, but.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Because oftentimes, they're not at school and whatever, but, yeah.
That's why I was wondering if they, if they did, you know, lower your score simply because you didn't test all your students.
Well, no, it will, if you look over like this percentage that met proficiency, it would. But it doesn't, like, like, when you look at those, like, eighty, so many made proficiency, those have, there's no tested. But when you look at the report cards, it's going up a points of people that were, that were tested.
Okay. Yep, thank you. All right.
And I sent that database to Sean, and I can also show anyone after the meeting, if they want to look, I can show you exactly where to find it.
Tom likes data, if you didn't know.
But you have to kind of tear into it, it's a little, it's all really raw.
We make fun of him for it all the time.
Glad to have you. Yes. Okay, next we'll go to the school calendar now.
Again, this is an informational item, so don't perceive the calendar as anything other than a draft at this point, you're not acting on it. But since last month, we talked about doing the exemption for the start date. I figured it would be a good idea to show you what that looks like now that the exemption has been granted from the state. So I'll go through it month by month. July's, nothing's happening in regards to school calendar, we're not quite back in action yet. So August, those three in-service days for staff are the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth. And then where you see the big star, that's the first day of school, August twenty-eighth, which is what you made a motion to have happen last month. Labor Day is September fourth, so we're not here. Our in-service day is the eighteenth, typically that's the week after, but if we move up school a week, so we move that up a week too. The first week of October, we moved up a week. Typically, that action that you see there is the week of the ninth, we moved it to the week of the second. The logic being, for a term class, if you're doing your conferences the seventh week of a nine-week term, it's a little late in the game. So we're moving it up, so we can have a period of recovery for kids that need such things. November sixth is our in-service day, that's the same time as it was this year. Thanksgiving is the same time, that's sort of built in for us. Christmas is a little more advantageous this time around in regards to having to take a day off. As you know, we have off this Friday, and that plan is straight from the Calendar Committee, and I believe, we initiated it in the Calendar Committee, and Erin was part of that conversation. People can't get to, you know, where they need to go for Christmas, but with this schedule, you've got a couple of days to take, make it happen, because Christmas isn't until that Monday after that weekend. Then we have New Year's off on the first, we moved up the end of the term, and this is a very recent change. We changed the fifteenth to be an in-service day, that's Martin Luther King Day. And some folks have off that day, so then they don't have to find childcare. Since they're off and their kids are off, then that works out perfect, we simply had to flip those days, the twelfth and the fifteenth. The in-service week slash conferences is the same time in February, the week of the twelfth. Spring break is there, we are still waiting for an answer from the state of Wisconsin, I believe, Josh, yes, true? We're still waiting for the state of Wisconsin to tell us for sure when the mandated ACT is. We think it's the fifth of March, but we don't want it to be the twelfth of March when we're all doing other things for spring break. We can't have spring break when they have to be here to take a test. Everyone that I'm hearing is making plans for it to be the fifth, but we would like an official word. So right now, in this draft, the eleventh is the day that we start our spring break week. The twenty-ninth is Good Friday, that's off by contract, so that's why that one circled. Then we have an in-service day on April fifteenth. And then our last day of school is the twenty-fourth of May, in that we started a week early, we are finishing a week early. And that has us being able to begin construction in the summer of twenty-four on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, because the twenty-seventh is Memorial Day. So that picks up almost two weeks of construction time. Any day without kids and staff is a day that Kraus Anderson enjoys, because they can't do it, they got to do it when we're all here. So that's the draft version of the calendar, and we're still taking feedback, if you have any. Tom's on that committee, Jessica, myself, and Erin is also on that committee. So feedback or questions, if you have any?
Because we moved school up, and we got the exemption from the state.
Yes.
Is there any impact that that's going to have for like, school lunch program, that kind of stuff?
There is a financial impact in serving meal in regards to reimbursement, but it isn't a tremendous impact. It's not tens of, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I mean, just to our, like, our families or anything?
Well, the, the ability to get lunch, there is that, they wouldn't be here during that last week of May to get lunch, that's true. But we could certainly look at making dispensation to make that happen, I just haven't engaged with John about that yet. We still have two snow days built into this calculation, the instructional minutes, we're obviously living that here right now. So there are still two days, but who knows what will happen on that, we could have nothing.
And as you pointed out, in the past, we don't need to build a lot of snow days in, because we can do a virtual day.
We can. We're going to talk about that tomorrow morning, actually, because it's becoming real already, with what's happened here last week, and now maybe this week. So it's where we have chosen to live for some reason.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, it's great, it's beautiful on the trees, not so much for driving and doing school. Other questions or comments? If not, I can move on.
So what, I mean, this is just very far in advance, but would summer school then not be at the elementary school?
We can do summer school at the elementary in twenty-three, not in twenty-four. But we haven't planned that far ahead, and I talked to Laura last week, summer school would be that, the tenth is accurate, because there was conversation about the third, but the truth on that is some of our teachers are still teaching in other districts on the third, the tenth they're not.
So we have two weeks before summer school starts?
Yes.
And then where that all takes place?
To be determined, not at the elementary, not at the high school, so I think that narrows it down. All right.
Okay, next will be.
So are we really just waiting for that ACT date?
That's it. Other than that, I don't think there's anything else that needs to be changed unless something comes up, and we missed something. We've run this past so many people so many times. State tournament series are always an issue, but we've looked at that. And you never know how your teams are going to do, so it's impossible to predict that.
Okay, with that, we'll go to our next item, the school board election on April fourth.
You see on the screen, notice of school board election, election set for April four, two thousand twenty-three. The, the notice reads, notice is hereby given that an election to be held in the school district of Amory, school district of Amory on Tuesday, April four, two thousand twenty-three. The following office is to be elected to succeed the present incumbent listed, position at large, Aaron Hosking. Then the office term is from April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three to April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-six. For candidates, a candidate camp, a campaign registration statement and declaration of candidacy must be filed no later than five PM on Tuesday, January third, two thousand twenty-three, here in the school district office. If a primary is necessary, a primary would occur on Tuesday, the twenty-first of February, two thousand twenty-three. And this was posted in the paper as well, and here it is now, so that's. So that's that.
There we go. I will go on now to our action items, the second reading of Board Policy 161.
Okay, the only item that has been added to what you saw last is in the middle of the screen in green, and that item reads, "In the event that a board member is making an inquiry about the conduct of the district administrator, questions and any subsequent investigation shall be led by the board president or vice president." So that's what was added per conversation last time.
Motion to accept that board policy? So moved. Char, second?
Second.
Dale? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. No.
Okay, duly noted. Motion passes. Next, we'll have our early graduation requests. Man, man, every year.
Yeah, so we have 12 students who have met the Amory 28 standard for graduation. Their parents have been involved in this discussion, they cannot happen without parental support and meeting with our guidance department, and I would recommend that we move those 12 to graduation after meeting the standards.
Okay. Do we have a motion for that? So moved. Char, and a second?
A second.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
So, so they'll officially graduate at the end of the semester in January, is that correct?
Yeah.
And then they can participate in May, but they just are not in school for this next semester?
Correct. We keep their, their email active and stuff, so they have access to that. We still collect their computer, and they come back and participate in the, the spring walk-throughs and stuff like that. Yeah.
Okay, good call in. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have donations.
Donations to the district, we have a couple. Deer Park Lions Club donated $475 to the Angel Fund, and a second donation to the Knights of Columbus. Thank you for organizing the Coats for Kids Drive, which provided over 300 winter clothing items to our over 100 children in the community, and we would need to make a motion to accept those two, those two donations.
Do we have a?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept those donations with many thanks to the Lions Club and the Knights of Columbus for generous donations and assistance to our students.
Absolutely. Second? Dale? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Always amazes me. We have a great community.
Yes.
Next is our personnel action items.
New employee and extracurricular contracts for the following individuals. Lonnie Baker, interim director of information technology. Lawrence Doten for JV Boys Golf Coach. Jacob McCall, middle school cross-country coach in Laurie Swantec. And school nutrition resignations from Angeline Osroas, Clubhouse Assistant Director, and Margaret Marson for Special Ed Para. And then retirements in twofold, Terry Cran for Academic and Behavior Support Para, and also she works in the Transportation Office as a Para.
Okay.